Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and for the role tonight, everyone is present with the exception of Mrs. Custer. And action item 2.1, we had an executive session with regard to the Act 44 Safe Schools Report for last school year '23 and '24. Moving on to public comment, is there anyone in the room that wishes to leave a public comment with regard to any agenda item? Okay, anyone online? All right, we're going to move on to the report of the superintendent.
Good evening. I have two things to chat about today. First, this is on behalf of the Potts Grove Education Foundation. The Potts Grove Education Foundation received $6,000 in grant funds from the First Presbyterian Church in Pottstown to purchase sensory room equipment for our buildings. We thank Mary Porter, designated fund of the Community Foundation of Broward County, for making this gift from the First Presbyterian Church possible. As a district, we're committed to meeting the social, emotional, behavioral, and academic needs of our students. We are creating these sensory rooms in each school equipped to create therapeutic environments for students with special needs. These rooms will help students regulate sensory input, emotions, and behaviors, enhancing engagement and learning in positive social interactions. Serving 27% of the nearly 3,000 students, including around 800 who need special instruction or accommodations, these sensory rooms support our commitment to inclusivity and success for every student in the Potts Grove School District. And my second item is just an acknowledgement to our colleagues in the Potts Grove Educational Foundation, Educational Association. This agenda contains two important memorandum of understanding that were a result of collaborations between the PGEA, which is the union that represents our teachers, and the district administration. These collaborative efforts will help bring pre-K counts to our community and also support our students through better coordination of positive behavior intervention supports, special education, and increased access to our fitness center. I want to thank all involved, especially PGEA President Andy Clark and his leadership team for their work to get these agreements in place. And that's it.
Okay, moving on to 4.2. That is listed under Report of Superintendent. Do you wish to speak on that, Dr. Finerty?
I'd actually like to invite Dr. Emory Lucas to the podium to walk us through this presentation. And while she's getting ready, I think it would be appropriate to just celebrate in front of the board that Dr. Lucas is probably the most recent recipient of the letter of superintendency. So she is now eligible to be a superintendent, so congratulations.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Still waiting for that famous piece of paper, but yes, thank you. All right, yes, so tonight I want to talk to you a little bit about one of our goals and one of our projects that we've been working on this school year. If you'll remember, we had previously an alternative education for disruptive youth program here at Potts Grove. And at the end of last year, we made the decision after doing what we call SWAT analysis, students' strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and as a district to move forward in a different way to support our students who might need a little bit of an alternative approach to their education. So in doing that, this year, we embarked upon last summer and into this year, two different programs, one at our high school and then one at our middle school. So tonight, I'm just going to talk very briefly, an update on that. You will see there's a link within the agenda for more detail as far as our progress update with that goal that you can view, but I just want to give you the key highlight updates of that work that we've done in those buildings and kind of where we're going next. So you see, you know, it states here that this was a goal around, you know, redesigning how we support students with alternative education type needs. And to give you an update at the middle school, we call it our Grove Academy, and students attend during the school day, but it's a kind of a different time of day. They're not there going the whole day. And so some of the highlights that I wanted to just share is we have some work this summer that we're going to be doing in review of how things went this school year, but overall, we met every progress update that we said we wanted to do and put in place. Everything from staffing to curriculum and instructional resources. What we've noted as highlights for the Grove program is students have experienced growth academically and behaviorally that we review with them and their families as they participate. Students had an opportunity to provide a tiered intervention with our staff and students at the middle school. Sometimes this program is an opportunity for students to participate in the building as opposed to maybe going to an out-of-district placement. So it's an opportunity for a more inclusive approach that we can then slowly bring them back into the regular school day. And then another piece of this is transportation has been very supportive, flexible, and accommodating our students, so we do want to make sure we give them some kudos for their support of this program. And into the coming year, we look forward to where this, you know, progresses further for the middle school. Evening academy, as we call it at the high school, you can see here as well, we hit, you'll see all of the targets that we set out to hit, achieved with staffing, the students served, the metrics that we use. And some of the highlights that I want to share tonight are, you know, we've been actually had some reach-outs from other districts. How do you run this? What does this look like? Being uniquely situated to offer this in the evening, I think, is something people are very interested in learning more about as that sometimes accommodates a high school student's schedule a little bit more or depending on what they have going on in their life. So that's, you know, a kudos for us as far as, you know, helping others maybe develop this type of program. Similar to the middle school, we've seen growth academically and behaviorally for the students in keeping them also within their, you know, within the high school building and not placing them into an out-of-district placement. And then, again, it has been shown to provide a tiered intervention with our staff, our students, the students connect with them. And then when they do transition back into the high school, those same staff members are still there to help them be supportive and successful. So that's the update that I have for you. Again, there's much more on this slide and in this document, but that gives you the key highlights and that we're very proud of this work. And, you know, it did take a team, a village, some of them in the audience right now, to develop this, and we look forward to the enhancements that we'll make this summer when we meet and reflect further on, you know, what comes next, my always my so what, now what? Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas, and again, congratulations on your letter of superintendency. We're moving on to the approval of the minutes, 5.1.
I'd like to make a motion we combine and approve 5.1 and 5.2.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 5.1 and 5.2. Any questions or comments from the group? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 6.1, receiving of accounts for audit, May 24.
I'd like to make a motion we approve the May high school, middle school, and cafeteries accounts as presented.
We have a motion and multiple seconds to approve the accounts for audit for May 2024. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. 7.1.
I'd like to make a motion we approve the payment of invoicing amount of $1,794,829.58 for May 2024 and June 2024 as presented.
And I would just note that there is a correction, there was a correction. Ms. Grimm stated it correctly, providing the corrected amount, and it's a change from the published agenda, but the amount stated tonight is correct.
Okay, forgive me, did we have a second for the motion? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments with regard to paying the bills? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 8.1, the Treasurers' Report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Treasurers' Report for May 2024 and file it for audit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurers' Report. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Action items personnel.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.1.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 9.1. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to acknowledge 9.1 is the promotion for the third time in three years of Mr. Eric Sawchuk, who is in the audience. Hello, Eric. Yep. So we are very proud to present Eric as the pending your vote, the next principal of lower Potts Grove Elementary.
Okay, any questions or comments beyond that? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, moving on to 9.2.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.2.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 9.2. Any questions or comments with regard to this?
Just again, kind of an explanation, 9.2 is concerns are Human Resources Director, Ms. Amy Thompson. Amy has served the district on her first contract for the past three years. Her contract is up at the end of this month, so this is time for a new contract to be brought before the board.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Moving on to 9.3.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 9.3 through 9.15.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the remaining items. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motions pass. Moving on to 10.1.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 10.1.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve July 2024 bill payments. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 10.2, please.
Jay's going to be speaking on behalf of the meeting.
We have a motion to approve, to move forward with 10.2.
Correct. Yeah, Ms. Grimm, are you going to make a motion?
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we approve 10.2, the Western Center budget.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 10.2, which is the Western Center budget. Any questions or comments?
I was just going to make a comment that they did approve the option 2, so that is for the 2024-25 budget. I just had a question about the additional funds and the amount of $16,000 because we already approved the budget with scenario 1. So is this 16 additional funds for this? Is that what we're doing?
My understanding is that, yes, by approving this motion, you are, in essence, revising your prior board action to increase the Western Center's budget by, your contribution to the Western Center's budget, by $16,866, and that does represent option 2. It was approved at the JOC meeting and I believe is scheduled for approval by the, by Upper Perkyomen, Upper Perkyomen School District and Springfield. So it was required to come back to you in light of the JOC's revision to the budget.
To, Patty asked me, the report is later, but to give some context to what happened, the Joint Operating Committee of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center met on June 3. On the agenda was approval for scenario 1. That was discussed, and one of the JOC members made an amendment to that, amending it from option 1 to option 2, or scenario 2, is what it was called. There were nine, eight members of the JOC present, total is nine there. The vote came down to 6-2 for approving the amendment for scenario 2. For scenario 2 to now be approved by the, I guess it's the JOC regulations or rules of, rules of approval, there needs to be two of the three school districts voting to approve scenario 2 and a total of 14 of the 27 board members. That's the nine full members of each of the three school districts, 27, and a majority of that 27 is 14. So the vote tonight is, there's actually two parts to it on your vote. One is your vote could count as a majority or minority vote here for Potts Grove, yes or no, to go to scenario 2. And also, your vote could count towards one of the 14 board members needed for the majority of the three boards to pass scenario 2. Correction on anything I'm saying?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so, yeah, so two of three districts, and we were told at that meeting that Springfield, while the superintendents had unanimously agreed to scenario 1, that the Springfield Board would be voting, I don't know if that's happened yet, for scenario 2, and that also the Upper Perkyomen Board would be voting for scenario 2. Now, I don't know how many of the members there, they would have to, well, you have to get to 14. You have to have the two districts, which I think they, we have as a JOC, and then you need 14 of the 27 board members. So your vote counts in two ways. One is towards the district, and then one is towards that 14 majority of the whole. Corrections on anything I've said? Chuck, you were, no?
No, I believe you've covered it very well. What's happened here is we approved our budget before the Western Center actually had proposed its request. You know, and we did what budget makers do all the time, which is you take a flying guess. And so at this point, I think, nobody, everybody agrees the Western Center does an excellent job in educating, in educating students, and we want them to continue. And this is a correction of something that happened during our, our budget process. Next year, hopefully, we'll be in sync with, not we, but the Western Center will be in sync with the districts as they prepare their budgets, and so this kind of thing won't happen.
And also, to refresh your minds, if that helps, scenario 2 is the addition of the safety and security piece, which is the extra wall to the entrance with a new door built into that wall, as well as the addition of several new security cameras in the hallway. It does not include, scenario 3 was the addition of staff assistant principal. That was not, that was in scenario 3, which was not agreed to. So they, what the 6-2 vote agreed to was scenario 2, which is the safety and security scenario.
Okay, are there other questions with regard to the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on to 10.3.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 10.3 through 10.9.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 10.3 through 10.9. Any questions or comments with regard to any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motions pass. 10.10.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 10.10 with an explanation.
Maybe we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Dr. Finerty, 10.10.
10.10 is an action item to authorize the district to pursue a contract with an engineering firm to develop a proposal for our facilities and athletic grounds. In a very similar way that we embarked upon the improvements to our school buildings, we first contracted with an engineering firm to create a site assessment and identify our high-needs projects before we moved into that. Over the course of the last three months, we've been talking about, in various committees, the need for improvements in our tennis courts and our track, and what we'd like to do, rather than just do these little improvements, we'd like to take a comprehensive look at our facilities and our athletic grounds, and this would be the first step in making that happen.
Any other questions or comments with regard to, to that? I know we did, oh, go ahead.
That's a fair question, yes. So what we'd be looking, with your approval, we'd be reaching out to companies this summer to identify companies that would be interested in making such a proposal. And ideally, we'd like to engage with the development of that through the summer and host community events that they can actually see what, what these plans might be looking like, so that we could potentially be positioned to actually make some physical improvements next summer. Because, again, with the school year, we're always targeting the summer as our work session, so that, that kind of defines our calendar. I would say this, that any, before we would move forward with any project, there would be significant discussion in our operations and finance committee and this, and before the full board as well.
Yeah, I just want to second what Dr. Finerty mentioned earlier. This follows the format that is a standard approach for dealing with large expenditures, getting an outside firm in to lend a hand and provide some professional expertise. Again, we've discussed this many times, and I'm getting tired of asking the question, is it a trip hazard? But, you know, I think this, I think this is something that we need to do.
Thank you. And then part of, we did have a discussion, unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to really expand upon some of the topics as far as the necessary improvements and some of the desired, you know, what would this look like sorts of improvements. One thing that I would like to see a number on, I know that, you know, the turf field is part of, of this plan, and what I'd like to see is what does it, what's the cost of maintenance? And what I mean by that is also included, I know that there are times you have to dispose of that turf and then get new turf installed, backfilled, I don't know the proper terminology. I guess what I'm looking for is, there's, there are always initial costs, but then there are costs that you might not think of right off the bat, and so I would like to see, you know, and in comparison, the cost of maintaining the grass field, there's a cost to that, too. I just really would love as much information as possible so we can make a really educated decision.
Excellent points, and that would certainly be part of the proposal that we would bring to you moving forward.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 11.1.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 11.1 through 11.9.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all of the action items education. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motions pass. 12.1, approval of policies.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 12.1.
Thanks, we have a motion and a second to approve 12.1. Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 13.1, MCIU Board Update. Mrs. Custer is not with us this evening, so we will move forward to 14.1, the report of the JOC.
I'll just pause a second again till the report gets circulated. The Joint Operating Committee of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center met on Monday, June 3 at 7:00. Discussed were, a school and safety security survey was discussed in executive session to discuss the results of the school safety and security survey. Reportable incidents were reviewed as well as solutions for resolving the issues. Administrative Director Dave Livinggood presented the results from the student and staff climate survey. Results of the climate survey were positive with approximately 80, 85% of the students and staff reporting positive on all items. Mr. Livinggood also reported that the Western Center's auction went well with only six of the items not selling. Superintendent of Record Robert Rizzo reported that the May 22 senior awards and recognition ceremony went well and was a great evening that was held at the Springfield Senior High School. It was agreed that support staff salaries will be based on the agreement. The agreement was up, or the salaries were up for renewal or increases based on agreement. And administrative salaries, there was a motion made and it was agreed that administrative salaries will be based on merit review plus a 2% true-up adjustment with the comparative group, which is the other technical centers in the area. In Western Center tends to be the lower paid of the technical centers in the area, and that 2% adjustment is to bring people up more to the, the average. Already mentioned this, the budget 24-25 Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center budget, it was recommended for approval at scenario 1, which is 4.5, 6% increase. Motion was made to amend that to include scenario 2, which would be the base and security with a 5.33% increase, and that amendment passed by a vote of 6 to 2. Mark Davis, the solicitor who was there that evening, explained that the amendment must be approved by at least two of the three sending school districts, one of those we did tonight, and at least 14 of the total 27 board members. Next meeting of the JOC is Monday, August 5 at 7:00 p.m. Chuck, Patty, any additions or questions? That's it.
Thank you, Jay. We're moving on to 15.1, Operations Finance Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'd like to make a motion we combine 15.1 and 15.2.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 15.1 and 15.2. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motions pass. 15.3, Policy Committee Meeting Report.
All right, good evening again. So this will be rather brief because our policy committee meeting was rather brief for the end of the year. So the committee met, and we actually did like a year in review. So we looked at all of the policies that we did revise and complete and create this school year. I just counted them, there were about 18, so that's something to applaud because the policies are a lot to look at and do, and many of them also result in some administrative regulations, so that work is still undergoing. So we talked about those policies and reviewed them. We also talked about how the September policy meeting's probably going to be very robust because there are already some policies we're thinking about bringing. There are a few I actually got an email about from PSBA as well that we will add. We talked about doing AI, social media, wellness, et cetera. For new business, we just looked at one policy for the evening, that was policy 121, which is field trips. And the reason for this is we just wanted to expand upon the And the reason for this is we just wanted to expand upon the categories of field trips, given the new world travel that we're bringing into the district starting next year. So there was conversation around that, some revision and editing, and then it is, it has been moved to 30-day review. And that is it for the policy committee meeting, unless I'm missing anything.
You got it all?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are already at new business. Dr. Finerty?
I just want to thank everybody for a great year, and we'll see you in August.
Any new business?
None for me, thank you.
Patty?
I just would like to thank everybody for a fantastic year, and be safe. Have a great summer, make memories, and be safe.
Thank you. Anique? Tanya? Dr. Nippert?
I just want to thank everybody for an excellent graduation, and a dry one. And it's been a very great, great year, so have a good summer.
Jim? Phil? Okay, really, to follow suit, yeah, what an amazing year, and I want to thank each of you for all of your hard work and dedication on the board. And Patty, do you want to speak to the MaxiMe issue that we just got tonight?
I just, I totally forgot.
No, go for it.
But if you get a chance, this is, will show you how talented our students are and how creative they are. There's a lot of work that goes into this, and it's something I look forward to every year. So Della Caldwell has retired, she's a dear friend, and she's enjoying herself, but I was going to say, if you see her, thank her and all of our students. It's a wonderful, wonderful book. Thank you.
No, thank you for mentioning. Okay, we are now moving to the final public comment. If there's anyone in the room that wishes to make a public comment on anything whatsoever, and if not, anything online? Okay, a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thanks. Good night, everybody.